Meeting, however, that's why we took it off this agenda, but however, we would like to let them know to keep us on their books that, you know, we would like to continue with them as our auditors in 22, 23, and 24. They have given us a quote that is very realistic. It's quite a bit lower from what Joe Robinson has informed me than we've paid in the past, and they've done an excellent job for us and are quite easy to work with.
And just asking, do, this is not something we have to RFP?
No, this is professional services.
Okay. No, agreed, I'm happy with what they've done. Any other comments, questions on this?
Nothing on Zoom.
Okay. In that case, um, is there a motion, um, to accept the proposal from?
SCK.
SCK?
For the?
To conduct our audits for 2022, 3, and 24.
So moved.
Okay, I've got three, so we're gonna go with Mr. LaFever. Make some motion, Mr. Bennett, second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero, thank you. Now, Old Roarstown Road, amendment to the agreement with PennDOT.
So this agreement is now through the item D amendment to the original agreement. The cost keeps increasing. This project has been bid, so this final, and hopefully the final amendment, D reflects the increased cost, and it's just acknowledging that fact. This is a project that is 95% funded by state and federal and 5% funded by municipal, and that 5% then is divided between Manham Township and the town, and Easthamfield, so our responsibility is 2.5%, and it's currently under construction.
And we really don't have a choice?
Answer is no.
Yeah.
Good answer, yes.
No, unless we wanted to pay everything back at this point.
Right.
Any other comments or discussion?
Well, the good news is we're getting some work done.
Yes.
Good thing we're getting a bridge today, is in desperate need of flooding and other issues, and we're paying two and a half percent of the costs, big picture.
Any questions, comments from the audience? Any from Zoom?
No.
Okay. Hearing none, is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-32, which authorizes signature on Amendment D between the township and PennDOT for the Old Roarstown Bridge Project?
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Russell, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Weaver, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero, thank you. Greenland, excuse me, Greenlight Go Grant Submission with East Petersburg.
So the township agreed to enter into a prior submission with East Petersburg Borough for these two intersection improvements through the Arlie program. They kind of want to double down and make sure they get some sort of funding, so they're also submitting it under the Greenlight Go Project, and they have asked us to, how about this board acknowledged approval to move forward with that grant?
Okay. Any questions or comments? Any questions or comments from the audience? Any from Zoom? Hearing none, is there a motion to authorize a submission of a joint Greenlight Go Grant with East Petersburg for traffic signal upgrades at Route 72 Miller and Route 72 Enterprise?
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Russell, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
I guess Mrs. White should just clarify too, that 20% match is evenly split between the two of us?
Correct. I think our share is about 9,000.
Okay.
Up next, we have alley naming extension of D Street and establishing, um, a, an official alley.
So Diane, if you could just put that graphic up there. A resident from Landisville who owns a business on an unnamed alley, which is to the rear of Main Street, had approached and inquired if he could possibly have an official address because he's having problems with deliveries to his business. He fronts, his business fronts on the alley, which is an extension of South Alley, and if you, South Alley and D Street, if you can kind of envision that in Landisville. Diane has been working with the Postal Service and the 911 and the property owner. Diane, I don't know if you have anything else to add?
Um, just that I did receive some feedback today that what is indicated here may not be possible. I'm waiting for the Postal Service Address Management System Supervisor to get back to me with what their thoughts are.
So the difficulty here is the naming process. So what I would look to the board to do is possibly authorize staff to name the alleys based on the feedback we get from the Postal Service and 911, and that way we can move forward before the next board meeting.
So just to clarify, what we're talking about is, is the name of the alley?
The name of the alley.
That's the only, is that the only holdup, or is there something else, Mrs. Garber?
No, at this point, it's the naming of the alley. Once the alley is named based on the standards from County 911 and the Postal Service, then it can, or should be able to have addresses approved on it, which would allow the process to change the address for 180 South Main, or East Main Street Rear.
Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this? If you could come and just state your name?
Good evening, I'm Steve Whitmer. And I own 180 East Main Street Rear. The narrow road recording. This is an ongoing issue. Got more with e-commerce. Of course, we're all getting things delivered via Amazon Prime, FedEx, UPS, Postal Service. So, I didn't name this person's name. The name that was posed by the township was the extension of South Alley. I spoke to the postmaster. She was opposed to that name.
Right.
She's for anything that isn't in 1753 at this point. Right now, the alley is unofficially known as Jimmy Buffett Drive. It's our proposal. Questioned me. Now, that's up to the township solicitor, I'm sure. There could be some ramifications there. But that, getting a name to something that is not in the township, that's, that's my rule of thumb. And it sounds like the postmaster called my son.
I, I think some of the, the addresses existing on the other portion of South Alley are very similar. So we want to keep them separated, so there's no confusion with 911, or deliveries for that matter.
So, yeah, and just, so to be clear on this, that, the letter that we got from the postmaster was actually as a response that you had reached out to?
Actually, the whole postal office is a post.
To the name?
To the name, South Alley.
But not to the idea of re, of naming the alley? Okay.
She very much would be naming any alley that isn't. To clarify, it's some internal struggle with getting access to the projects.
So it sounds like that the red line that you see on the, on the print there would be the D Street extension. I don't see a problem with that. The green line would be known as, I'm not quite sure if we wanted to go Jimmy Buffett, but maybe Buffett Alley or something like that?
Obviously, it's something like related to Amos Hor, something like some famous people and that have lived in the town, like Hor Avenue or something like that. I did a quick check, does the Hor Street or Hor Ave, and no, I find this all. Not that I'm saying that we should call it that, but I do think if, if this postmaster is commenting on that we should be naming our alleys, then maybe we should be taking this one step, immediately address this issue as quickly and expeditiously as we can. I probably need to look back and get signs up and name all of our alleys because of the e-commerce things and stuff like that. It just makes it easier for people to get around when there's actually a street sign up and explaining what that road is, versus just saying, you gotta make your third left on the alley, or something like that for directions, so. Sounds like you were bringing up that there's a problem that the postmaster would kind of like us to address. Okay.
Yeah, it's not just, it's not just the alley.
I mean, if, if the board has a preference with the name, please share it with us, or we could wait until the 21st meeting and bring you back names that have been approved by the, the post office.
If we can, I'd like to deal with it tonight. I'm okay with Buffett Alley. I'm okay with with that if we want to.
We'll try for Buffett Alley?
I like it. I already have a sign up. And I mean, fine, we're going to be Buffett Alley yet. I think it needs to be there for, you know, the deliveries, the time on one and all that back. I've got a lot of people threatening, they come back and spot, there's women, there's, you know, there's, it's huge, um, I think something like that. It's already on Apple Maps as Jimmy Buffett Drive. Now, it only comes down one flag. And then the guy who's in the cloud, they call it Jimmy Buffett. Yeah, off the drive.
Yeah, I would recommend we drop the Jimmy part though, that's for signing. But I'm okay with Buffett. I would recommend Cindy that maybe that's a traffic commission discussion about naming all the rest of the alleys.
Yes.
That would be a, that, and maybe a discussion with the post office and finding a list or of nine names we can't use in Landisville, so.
Yep. No, we'll, we'll get you a complete, um, analysis of Landisville and what's not named.
I'm sure it probably applies to Roarstown too, although I do think most of our alleys at Roarstown are named at this point.
I think they are, but we'll check, yeah, while we're doing it.
Okay. Are there any other comments, questions on this? Yes, sir?
All right, Phil Terry, 2611.
You just come to the microphone for meeting purposes, thank you.
Phil Terry, 2611, you're going to be naming some of the alleys, but I suggest maybe looking at maybe some prominent veterans at Winery.
That's a great idea. Thank you.
Did, did you suggest Whitmer Alley?
Kind of a private person. My neighbor that was here in my country, Chuck Hartman, actually owns property on both sides of the alley. But he wasn't hearing the sound of his voice, he's, he's either a merchant or a. So I don't, I don't say anything for that, but if it's stormy and then you live in a, it's hard.
Well, I think, let's keep it moving, we have a name. So, at this point, is there a motion to designate the unnamed alley discussed in Landisville as Buffett Alley? Motion for Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Russell, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chairman, if we could also add the D Street extension to that?
Okay.
If there's no objection, then I'll just add that to the motion.
So let me modify the motion, is there a motion to designate the unnamed alley along with D Street?
Correct.
Um, in Landisville to Buffett Alley? Do you accept that?
Yes.
Amendment? And Mr. Russell with the second, okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Much, motion carries five to zero, thank you.
We don't get that.
Yeah, that's, that's the easy ones. All right.
Well, you don't, haven't seen the sign yet.
All right, up next, the Susquehanna River Basin Commission, and you folks are welcome to remain for all this fun stuff too.
I just kind of blanked on what this was for. So, um, we were shot down with the last grant application we had submitted for this project, which is the project on the golf course property and the southern border of the Hark property. We are now going to resubmit to the SRBC Consumptive Use Medication Grant, and we're looking for authorization from the board, which is also a commitment of 25%, which is 224,000. This is a project on our long-range plan, so it's not a new project, it's an existing one.
So the 225 rounded up that we're responsible for, does that 40,000 in kind count towards the 225, or is that addition?
No, it's an addition.
Okay.
Just have, I know the Water 30 is having issues with how much water they're allowed to pump out of their wells. Is this any way of greasing the wheels of progress for that, or is this a totally separate issue?
Unfortunately, totally separate.
That's kind of what I figured, but. I mean, I guess it's, they're considering it, it's a good thing because it's a stream restoration, which helps the groundwater. So, I mean, they are putting in most of the money.
I mean, if anything, it might improve the unnamed tributaries flow towards the back there of their property, which was a bone of contention for SRBC.
Yeah, seems like a good thing.
And this will help address some of the flooding of Church Street too, in the process?
Yes.
Is, is this project on our current budget?
It is part of the project list that you have looked at before.
Right.
And it was, well, it was under the unfunded list, right, at that point?
Correct. We're still looking for funding.
At that point.
Yeah, we're not moving forward until we have some funding.
And, and, okay, and when, when do we anticipate that we would move forward on it?
Probably, assuming we get some grant funding, I would say 2024.
All right, so we're just in the.
And this is following our guidelines of what we talked about in the budget meetings, that all of our stormwater projects, we would do grant-based.
Correct.
Okay. Just mindful of all the road infrastructure costs that we got right now, so this would be kind of following along those same guidelines.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Any on Zoom? Hearing none, is there a motion to authorize Matching Funds Commitment Letter for the submission of a SRBC grant submission for golf course and Hark Stream Restoration Project?
So moved.
Okay, motion for Mr. Russell, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. LaFever, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. CM High Traffic Signal Contract for 2023?
This is our annual contract with CM High for all our traffic signals. It's considered professional services, and their contract from over to 2022 is up about $150, so it's very minimal increase. And they do a very good job for our signals, with our signals.
Any comments or questions on this?
I have a very, had very good experiences with CM High over the years professionally, so they do, they are a very good signal contractor.
Any comments or questions from the audience? Zoom?
No.
Okay. Hearing none, is there a motion to authorize signature on the 2023 Traffic Signal Maintenance Contract with CM High?
So moved.
Okay. Motion for Mr. Bennett, second for Mr. LaFever, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Our meeting calendar?
It's that time of year again. I provided you with a calendar, my colorful calendar usually. Pretty much everything's standard as we have done in the past. The board supervisors meets the first and third Wednesdays. The zoning hearing board meets the third Monday, planning commission meets the second Wednesday, with the cav out of the reorganization meeting, which is typically scheduled for 4:30 on Tuesday the 3rd, and our budget meeting in October, which is on the 24th, which is a Tuesday, at 4:30. Everything else is at 7:00 PM.
I know July, no first.
And no July meeting, yes.
Everybody good with this? Any questions, comments? All right. Hearing none, is there a motion to set the 2020-23 meeting calendar as presented?
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Weaver, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Russell, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Up next, old business? Any old business? Any new business? For discussion? Hearing none, public comment? Does anybody, please?
Phil Terry, 2611 Marriott Avenue, thanks for having me back. Last thing, number second, you discussed a public issue, I still have my neighbor, and you, at one point, told you, I suggested that we should like to, and I, or contact each other and try to work that issue out. You did, you have some emails back and forth, just we agree, disagree. I disagreed with that comment. So, and, frankly, when you pull up 270 outside storage, 222.
Diane, could you do a Google or map on 20, 2711, 2611, Marietta?
Yes, just for your information, we cannot hear him at all, it doesn't appear the microphone is working.
Oh.
2711, Marietta Avenue?
2611.
2611, thank you.
I don't know what we're talking about, Ken.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, much better, thank you.
I'm like an AT&amp;T commercial. Oh. The outside storage, 270-4.7?
Oh, I'm sorry, you want the zoning, I thought you wanted your address.
Zoning, no, I, no.
Um, we'll have to go to E codes.
Yep, just give me a minute.
Thank you.
Sorry about that, I misunderstood.
I may not have been clear.
No, I just heard numbers, I figured it was an address. And she couldn't hear you at all, so.
Right.
Do you happen to know which specific portion, is it 274.7?
Yes. Outdoor storage? 270-4.7 A, B, C. The final email that we had did come down to, or that I received, came down to saying that the RV in question exceeds some parameters, therefore falls under Section B below. So, in B, under 2B, storage of a recreational vehicle for periods of time exceeding the outside limit outlined in 274-7B2A shall be subject to the following. And if you look down at sub, sub paragraph one, four developments consisting of more than 20 single families. Otherwise, every other vehicle, RV, can only be parked in someone's driveway 72 hours of a seven-day period. It used to be, have a separation between type one and type two that was eliminated during the last encoding voted on in November, I believe, or September. And so, I mean, that's been my argument all along, is that RVs now of any size can only be parked 72 hours in a seven-day period, unless it's under a business and, and they are putting in more than 20 subdivisions within that land. That's how I read it. And if I'm mistaken, then I don't know where I'm, where I'm missing those points.
So staff has looked at this, staff has, including myself, Mr. Sturgis, our zoning officer. It's also been reviewed by our solicitor, and our stance is that there is no violation when the wings are closed. And that's where the agree to disagree comes in.
That was the, that was my second complaint, was when, when the wings were open, he was in violation. But now, I'm, according to the way that you encoded the outside storage, this RV cannot even be parked there for more than 72 hours, according to what you have written in these codes.
Again, it's been reviewed by our solicitor, our zoning officer, our planner. Mr. Sturgis is online, you can maybe add some to the conversation. It's a case that Mr. Terry is interpreting it one way, or reading it one way, we are reading it another. It's our ordinance, and that's our stance.
Good. And, Mr., did Mr. Sturgis have any?
Mr. Sturgis, did you have any other comments on that?
Could you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, no, just what you said, uh, those different qualifiers, they're, they're independent of each other, it doesn't, it doesn't have to be all A, B, or C, it's A, or B, or C. I don't have the ordinance right in front of me at the moment, but th, this has been reviewed, as Cindy said, Township Virginia also reviewed it, and we're all in agreement with the way it's written.
Okay, I'm, sometimes we end up with these, you know, situations, and we get an answer that we don't like to hear. But there is an answer, and if, if our solicitor specifically has waited on this as well. But there is an answer, and if, if our solicitor specifically has waited on this as well. You know, short of changing the ordinance, if she's saying that, that he's within compliance, there's nothing that, that we can do as far as an enforcement mechanism goes. I think if I remember correctly, when you were here last, maybe it was Mr. LaFever.
Right.
Recommended that you get a fruitcake for Christmas. For the neighbor not being funny, but is there, just to follow up on that, has there been any outreach to your neighbor to try to come to some better agreement and?
No, there hasn't. We're. We are still being harassed. I mean, now they've put a chair in the back of the yard that says intimidator for his mother, so. That's where we stand. And we have a, uh, we have a writ for him that he's not even allowed to make contact with us because of all the the hassle we've had over the last year. So I'm not at this point engaged in trying to override that.
I guess to clarify and build on that comment, it was not all completely intended as humor.
No, I understand.
You're, it appears as though you somehow have to accept that there's going to be an RV there unless we can come up with something different.
Okay.
One gets a lot of stress themselves on issues like this to no end. And if if somehow you come to accept or block it from your mind of sometimes that's what we have to do. Call it surrender, call it what you might, but in the end one has a bit more well being. Now, the thing that I remember from last month that still troubles me a bit is the offensive lighting.
Yes, that's the only positive.
Part of your project, your property.
Right.
I think that must have some kind of controls because we, we put in shopping centers, we require them lighting standards that do not invade other properties and things. So I think there is an issue that you need support and should have it. And somehow, again, i- if there's a way to try to trade, living with that was something he can do for you. I, I don't know.
Right.
I just know in my years, there's, there comes to a point of no return and the only way to deal with it is to try and accept and get the best out of it.
Right. Well, with the RV sitting there, that's the only positive I have from that is it does block a lot of that light. So, but again, it only comes on when we're out in our front yard and lights up the entire front of my house and my neighbor to, to the east of me as well.
I find that to be troublesome.
So I don't know who can look at that or
We.
Deal with that.
As we mentioned last meeting, we had another property that had the same issue. There was a floodlight put up and staff looked at it. And then there is nothing in the ordinance that prohibits that. Now, if he was a subdivision or land development, yes, we do. But a single property that has a light shining and across a property line, there is nothing in our ordinance that prohibits that. I believe I'm correct on that, Nate?
That's correct. There's nothing in the zoning ordinance that, uh, has any provisions for lighting.
I mean, I would agree. I, I drove past and it, it's lit. But there's nothing that stops them from doing that.
We do have a noise interference. I mean, noise goes past your property line. It doesn't just stop at your property line, similar to light. I mean, is there any point in asking our solicitor if if we can or should have a, a light ordinance?
I probably is more, do you want a light ordinance?
How would you enforce it?
Like for land development, you have professionals that do light studies. We don't, I don't know if we want to be making homeowners do light studies on one another.
And have a light meter. Got our zoning officer a light meter maybe, but.
Well, there is something in the ordinance is about one foot off the ground, candle power, et cetera.
Yeah, it's, it's in the land development. So that's, that's for like commercial development, that kind of stuff. And we do have stuff about street lighting, but we don't have stuff about the lighting on. I, I just did a quick scan of all of our ordinances.
Right.
And it just, it pops up just land development, streetlights.
I mean, how do we enforce the noise ordinance? I mean, you can stand there and you can hear that there's noise, but how do you measure it? And I mean, I could stand at someone's property and say there's, it's too bright, but again, I guess there's some issues.
Is this an RV problem? Problem really him parking his RV there? Is the problem really the light that comes on thing, or is there something else?
It's, that RV has been there for quite a while and it's, it's just an eyesore. I mean, he's got it covered now for the winter, but usually he's parked it somewhere else for the winter for, you know, for storage and.
I'm not sure. I hear what you say, but I'm, I'm not sure you'd answer my question. Is are getting you a re- uh, resolution on the RV or the lights? The real problem, the real issue that needs to be dealt with here?
It is one of the systemic problems. I'll put it that way. I mean.
I mean, provide your property every day.
Okay.
It's a beautiful property. You've done wonderful things there.
Thank you.
On your property. Okay? I see the RV there. I mean.
Well, as Mr. LaFever said, with, I, I'm given at this point, I've been here three times asking about it and I, I guess I just have to
I, I just.
Throw down the flag and say that's it.
I just don't think there's anything that, that we can do here.
Okay.
To help the situation.
It was just my, I get my interpretation of what was written and B says follow this, if this, and if not, go back to two A. So I went back to two A and that's seventy two hour period. So I mean, as I read it.
And to follow up with what Mr. Bennett is, I think is the point he's making and driving home is even if we did all those things.
Right.
It's not solving the problem. The problem is a neighbor dispute. And you know, there's times that government just cannot be the solution
Okay.
to these types of problems and, and other problems as well. And I think this is one of them. And I, I think that's what he's trying to say to you and Mr. LaFever's, the advice he's trying to give you too.
Right.
As well, so. I think you have our answer.
Yes.
That staff has given you and we're in support of staff on this.
Okay. So. And I'll just send by saying have a great holiday. Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, up next, we have our managers group report.
So Centerville Road, um, they are doing what they can for the winter months. They are actually started. They did some peer work. They did some relining of route thirty uh, in anticipation of, of what they can do if the weather cooperates. The Church Street water line, I had hoped that that would be fully completed by our meeting, but due to the weather, it's been delayed. They intend to have it fully restored this week.
Are they going to do full restoration or is it going to be temporary and come back in April?
I think it's full. Perry, is that full restoration? Because I was surprised they would do that.
Yeah, because I don't know if the plants are not, if we're going in summer months, plants are open somewhere. They would, they began the pavement for full restoration.
I, I believe the way they left it, and I think this is with Pendot, they're just doing like eight inches of base material and sealing the edges. Um, and, and that's all they are going to do. Uh, bands that is going to be milled and paved. I guess at some point, um, that's where it was left. So I believe they're just putting in base material and that's what's allowing, that's what they're kind of getting and making right now, so.
So it's going to be a rough finish over winter.
Sounds like. Yes.
And I'm, this is just a question because I don't know, um, when I have traveled through there, when those lanes are open, is that what it's supposed to look like? Is it supposed to be that rough or?
That's forward.
Is it, can it be better? Is there something?
I, I don't know if you've been there since yesterday or the, or the day before. They did come in and mill up what was there. And they did put a new, um, section of base course down. So twenty five millimeter base course, it, it looks rough and it'll sound rough, but it shouldn't be bumpy. Um, it, it should be a, I wouldn't say a smooth ride, but um, it's just like driving in a new development that has just been, you know, uh, built with that type of paving. But they were up through there, like I said, and they milled the, uh, I don't know how far they got. I didn't try going through today, but it should not be bumpy anyway.
All right. Well, I look forward to that.
And then when you're comfortable with that, they'll come through and start the actual work. So I have no further information on the paving project that hopefully will start and in twenty three that Pendot will be administering on Church Street. Uh, Old Roy's Town Road Bridge, they're still going back and forth with shop drawings. I mean, there is work in progress out there. They have created a pad for the crane, so there is work being done, but there's still a lot of internal discussions with the contractor and the designers to get that, those shop drawings approved. Uh, Farmingdale Road, um, there's a question about the mast arms. The J V I is confirming the pole placement. And they're going to follow that by placing the order for the mast arms and then they're going to provide us with the construction schedule. So hopefully they're in tune with how that all needs to fall into place. Route seventy two and Lititz Road, I just got word back from McMahon Associates. Pendot seems to be spinning their wheels to get that permit issued. Um, Chris Bowers at a conference today, he was going to talk to the, I think, the assistant secretary for Pendot to see what's going on because they had promised us that they would expedite that permit and we're still waiting for it. So hopefully that is forthcoming. The truck study that McMahon is working on, um, we were hoping for a December return on that. It's probably going to be January. Stony Battery Trail, we're still inching along there in the right direction. They did reach out to the storage facility. He is scheduled to do his work in spring. T and E will be our project. And then the, um, issue with the shortcut, I did reach out to, uh, Westhamfield. They would prefer that it get closed. So that's kind of where we're at with that.
We have another discussion with them on that one?
We sure can.
Okay, so I think hindsight with where that given the issues at Kaufman and that stop bar and the site distance issues there in certain times of the day. That's actually a very popular left turning movement on the Westhamfield side.
He said if there's extenuating circumstance, they would reconsider.
Yeah, because we have, that is not an easy left to make off of Kaufman Road onto Stony Battery when school is going into session in particular. Uh, you have heavy traffic at that point. You got very limited sight distance. You got buses that are blocked like this and stuff like that. That becomes a, a go to route to go around that problem area. So it would make more sense to do what we had talked about, which is not do the roadway vacating. Put the trail in on one side, leave it that the Westhamfield side open. Easthamfield side becomes the trail with the layers like we had talked about. And then you just make it two way up to the driveway and then it's blocked from that point. So there's a section that's blocked on both ends. Um, which would be the, the walking area. So the driveway for that corner lots, triangle lots still has full access in and out. So that addresses that issue. We still allow the, the traveling uh, southbound on that to address the site that's this issue. We get the walking trail in and it seems to work the best. Um, I've really given that one a lot of thought. I can't think of a better way to do it. At this point, meaning all those different needs of trying to address a slight distance issue, allow the traffic to still do that, get the pedestrians walking. Take into account that the driveway on the property, the, the no name roadway needs to have full access. That seems to be the best fit. Um, so we can have another conversation with Westhamfield. I don't think it'd be wise for us to abandon that roadway. I think we need to keep it public at this point.
Okay. Yeah, because I mean, it, it really ultimately is Westhamfield because the roadway will remain open on their side. Yeah, okay.
And then I, I think for the trails that are going in, uh, we don't need to have handicap ramps, but are we making sure that there's going to be detectable warning surface strips being put where we're crossing the roads?
I couldn't tell you that. I don't know.
Double check that we're, that's a requirement. So can we just double check that's actually happening that we don't don't flub on that ADA requirement. I mean, that one's just being put in by other parties right now. So in particular, the, the one that's going in on Noel.
Yeah.
Should have detectable warning surfaces on both approaches where it's crossing the street.
I kind of think they are, but I will double check.
Thank you.
McFarland Drive. Moving along on that, Nate Sturgis and the zoning officer did actually make personal visits to the three businesses on McFarland, introduced themselves, explained what we were doing. I mean, they had gotten a letter before, but kind of reemphasized they now have contacts for those two of the three. So that's moving along. Uh, we intend to do some property owner packets for a potential meeting in February with those property owners. The, uh, look at the culvert, it looked, I think Nate was out and I think Scott Haint was also out and they said it looked fairly good in terms of function, that there was some sediment, but not overly sediment. Not overly full of sediment. The men's street, their man's stream project, you had asked about the credits. They're estimating just over a hundred thousand credits on that project. Now, this is very early in the project stage, but that's what they're thinking. The dividend checks were dispersed to, uh, employees, staff. They were very thankful. I got several compliments and thanks. I don't know if you have received anything, but hopefully they're very appreciative. We talked about the Brookside, the Rakbe grant. Wellness Trauma Dog. I sent you an email, a memo from, uh, Chief Brubaker. We have a picture. That helps your decision. Um, these are the, the puppies. Uh, and I'll let, uh, Chief Brubaker explain what this is.
Sure. Uh, back on Veterans Day, uh, the department was tagged in a social media post by a local dog training company out of Elizabeth Town that they had a breeder, uh, donating six or seven golden retriever puppies, uh, to veterans, local police department and police officers that were in, in need. Um, I immediately reached out after getting tagged in. It was kind of somewhat intrigued by it. And found out, yeah, basically what I've just explained, the breeder has, has last litter she's going to do. She's a strong supporter of military and law enforcement and wants to donate the puppies free of charge to, uh, hopefully local departments and veterans. The training company, Elizabeth Town is providing the certification for the dog to be a certified comfort trauma service dog, whatever type of title you want to use for it. As far as internally, there's a lot of benefits with having, we have one canine. I really wasn't anticipating coming to you requesting a second canine for the agency, but um, this really seems to be a, a really nice fit for our department at this point in time with some emphasis that we've been putting recently on on wellness across the board, having the dog available for the officers, but also importantly for victims of crime, witnesses, community engagement. Um, I think there's a lot of positive things that could come about with it. Locally, York City has two comfort dogs. A department in Cumberland County has one. Um, there aren't any in Lancaster, but two other police departments are currently that I know of considering jumping on the bandwagon here. Um, I've reached out to local vet that provides coverage for Tundra currently. He is more than willing to provide veterinary services. This type of canine doesn't require a special car, special, uh, equipment or ongoing training past the certification period of time. Uh, so the expenses and the impact fiscally are, are pretty minimal for the department other than getting off the get go some basic minor equipment for a handler, uh, which as we all know, we have a a budget line for special projects and canine unit, which would easily fund the minimal cost to, to start this program. So at this point, I'm requesting that um, permission to apply for, for one of the dogs. I, I will say that, um, with communication this week, this all kind of came about very rapidly, um, that I am fairly confident that we would be awarded one of the dogs at this point. Um, they haven't had a lot of interest. We were the first department to reach out. They'd like the dogs to go locally. I'm open to any questions that you might have about the anticipated user program.
Is there one primary, primary handler of the dog?
It's a good question. Um, yes, there is. One, one person would be appointed the, the handler. Um, as the dog is trained a little bit more, we would have the ability to leave it here. And it wouldn't have to go home with the handler. And it wouldn't have to go home with the handler every night. It could stay for a weekend. If a shift wants the dog um, around for a night shift, it would be able to just. Be around at the station, and they would just have to be responsible for making sure it got out and fed if it needed to be fed. But it would have one, one. Point of contact as a handler. Um, the decision at this point is for it to be, uh, someone that works on Monday through Friday, day shift schedule. That way. All four of our patrol shifts have equal interaction with the dog. If it went to a, a patrol shift, that would limit. Employee engagement interaction. So having it around during the day. Kind of keeps it fair across the board and has it available to everybody. And also, a lot of the follow-ups that our detectives do with crime victims. Occurred during the daytime hours, so it would be available at that point. Also going into schools, um, retirement communities, so on and so forth is a. It's just kind of a friendly, friendly face of the police department. Anytime we take Tundra places, everybody wants to. To give Tundra a lot of attention. Um, you know, unfortunately, due to the way he's programmed. Community interaction with him is is always limited and a little, uh, we're a little protective. But this would be a whole nother avenue of a canine unit.
Call him Jimmy Buffett.
Name's getting a lot of use tonight. Well, I, for me, I I'm fine with it. Uh, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, so.
It's a worthy, worthy project, worthy effort. I assume you got a hundred percent buy-in from your staff.
So I had a sergeant's meeting. We had one this afternoon. It was already scheduled, so it was presented to all the supervisors. Um, they were all on board with it. The. The bulk of the mass of the department isn't aware yet. We kind of kept it under wraps until I had permission. From you guys to make the application for it, but it would definitely be something we put out tomorrow. But I, anytime we have a stray dog that comes into the station. Um, that stray dog gets a lot of love and attention by the officers, often goes around, just driving around for. A couple hours, because nobody wants to put it back in the cage. Um, it gets a lot of social media for just a stray dog, so, um, I can't. Imagine that anybody's going to have any objection to having a a friendly golden retriever welcome them when they come back into the station after a a tough call.
Has there been any thought to naming the dog?
There has been. There has been. I I made a phone call this afternoon to. To get permission from somebody for use of a name. Um, I think, I think I'm quite ready to put it publicly yet, if that's okay, but. Um, I think we have a, a very, very appropriate name for the dog.
I can just imagine what that is. And there's, there's several offices on the other side of the building that have also expressed an interest in having them.
I think there's going to be a lot of dog beds in the township building.
Do you need anything from us?
Not really. I just need your buy-in, just your general consensus that you're okay with it.
Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, we had, uh, two, um, group meetings. We had a planning group meeting. We discussed a possible text amendment to a concern that was raised by Keystone Homes regarding building height. Those reviews are being done by, um, they have been suspended by Keystone and they're being reviewed by staff. So eventually, you'll get a a text amendment from Keystone. To potentially change the heights, how we calculate the height of a building.
Have we received a text amendment proposal?
We have received options from them. They've been dispersed to our engineer and attorney, and hopefully. We'll get some buy-in there and then present it to, tell Keystone, they'll they'll create their text amendment.
And a little background for the rest of the board, I think, uh, for Keystone has a particular issue because they are challenged. By, um, some of the slopes. Um, with the walkout basements and how we measure. Each side from top to bottom. Uh, but there is a secondary issue there too, which it seems. Township to township, there's a variance on the way that, uh, these heights are calculated. As well as maybe some variance on what the actual numbers for the actual height are. So, I think staff was going to look at it and and come to a conclusion that was best for us, I think. As a township, um, as well, so.
Yeah, so they did their due diligence, so it's up to staff, and I've told staff to to turn that around quickly. Uh, did we also review the, a a draft recreation plan that was prepared by DMA? And as part of that, we are also looking at the park and rec fee. So that's going to be going to our solicitor for review and creating an ordinance. And then back to the board for consideration to move forward with that. Campus Zone, there was concern about the density and some lot definitions. DMA is looking at that. They had a a discussion. During the planning group meeting, they've gotten some feedback. They're going to go back and revamp what they provided to us. And then the planning can, planning group will then, um. Make a determination, then we'll move forward on that angle as well. And it really just tightens up some of the density and some of the, how, what kind of properties can be used and how define lot area. Uh, the Park and Rec Group met tonight. We saw the second draft of the master plan for the park. At Knollt and Church Street. It's a hundred percent different than the first one. We've made a lot of progress. I believe that the Park and Rec Group is ready to present that to the Board of Supervisors, probably at your second meeting in January. And the thought process there is to, um, get it out to the public, have some public discussion for maybe a month or two, and then. Take formal action to adopt the, the master plan for that park. And then the real work begins, because there's no funding for anything on it. But it's very comprehensive. The other thing, last thing is, I do need a short executive session to talk about a legal matter. That concludes my report.
One quick question on Centerville Road. Do we get a regular update from Pendot on what they're doing and when they're doing it?
We just, we, they're starting that process. We had a very good relationship with that for State Road. They just gave us a. A three-week look forward.
Okay.
Of what they'll be doing. Yes.
And we can, and we, we'll put that on our website so that businesses along Centerville Road can.
Yes, that's the plan. Diane, I don't know if you want to expand on on your process there, but I know that she's very much in touch with, uh. A Pendot representative and and we're. Doing postings and and things of that nature. Keeping.
Yes. Um, anytime they do anything that impacts travel. Um, Pendot requires a press release. We get that press release at the same time that it goes to. Um, Pendot's mailing list, and we post that as well as, um, she will be moving forward, providing us with a two-week look ahead. Um, and updating that throughout the two weeks that it's provided for with current, um, status on project. Items, especially those that impact the the traveling public and the businesses. We're also creating as comprehensive as possible a list. For context for the businesses along the corridor, uh, that will be impacted and the school district is involved as well as far as. School bus routing, because while there are not a large number of stops through the project, there are school buses that utilize that route.
So it's going to be impactful, but we're trying the best we can.
Anything else for the good of the order? Okay. Well, it is eight sixteen. We will adjourn into executive session and we will not return. Yes, we did. We did have public comment. Uh, we actually had a gentleman that spoke for. Several minutes about his neighbor during public comment. Um, I guess officially, we can either reopen it if you, or do you, or we could, you can come up and talk to us after the meeting. Is that? Well, no, now, if it's only going to take a few minutes.
We are looking at a potential traffic signal. Temporary traffic signal there. Yes. Along Stony Battery. It goes, it starts at Knollt. To Stony Battery to Kaufman. I couldn't tell you that. Correct. Off of Lawrence Boulevard. Off of, off of, off of Centerville to Bunny to Lawrence. Very close to the CVS. At the corner. It used to be the Stauffer Farm where they had a a produce wagon. That's Lime Springs Village. Yes. No. It's fifty acres that the township has owned pretty much forever. Yes. Yes. Well, it's not a question of them using it, that they will continue to use it as long as we allow them to. They lease it from us. The thought process is to to create a park. It was submitted to the paper. I can tell you if it was advertised. She confirmed that she received it, so.